Manually read their water meters until I came to Howard Lake. We get, I'm not kidding, we get phone calls every billing cycle. People are complaining about reading their water meters. It's, it's a huge complaint and there's some people that they can't get to it and you know, that they want us to come out and read them and so we're looking for a auto read system where we would have like a handheld system in our vehicles and our public works department would drive around and collect all of the water meter readings, you know, the same day every month. We believe that this would be more accurate. We know that there's probably people that aren't reading their meter right on accident or potentially on purpose. We're not getting timely water meter readings. We're not getting them at all. We have some accounts where we haven't received a water meter reading in almost a year and you know, we call them, we send them letters and they still don't get back to us. So we're estimating and it's just not good for anybody. It's really difficult to collect what we're supposed to be collecting and so part of this RFP is we're looking for a turnkey solution. We want compatibility with our existing software, which is Banyan. We don't want to have to switch up our software as well. We've talked to a couple water meter suppliers and those two have both said that their systems would work with ours. So we're hoping to get more interest in this project and that hopefully more people can work with our system. We want quality and warranty and future maintenance and operations. We, I included in the RFP a potential timeline that we're going to be looking at. So we would release this, you know, as soon as, we posted as soon as tomorrow, but it wouldn't hit the newspaper until next Friday. We want to have questions from the potential suppliers back to us by April 2nd. We would supply answers to those questions by April 9th. So on and so forth. We would want to bring whoever we select or whoever we agree upon back to city council in May and I put August as a potential deployment date. We aren't sure how quickly. I mean, it could be June, it could be August, it could maybe be December. We don't know what that's looking like yet. But yeah.
So are we required in RFP or why are we in RFP? Do you even know all two vendors already? Why wouldn't we just see both of them?
We are not, but discussing this with other communities that have done the same, you get a really wide range of proposals and there's really good and bad in that. So there's some different vendors that are from out of state that come in with really attractive prices, but they've.
That's poor.
Right. Likewise, there's some people that we know locally that we already do business with, but we know that they're the most expensive product. So doing this really levels the playing field and gives equal consideration to each one of those vendors for you guys to make a fair and right decision.
What do you, what happens during the billing cycle though? Would people, I mean, do you anticipate people calling and disputing the auto read? Just as much as they're complaining about having to read or?
We think that there's going to be some hiccups at the beginning. Mostly we, we, we have people that are reporting that they're only using maybe 400 gallons a month. I mean, maybe you are if it's a single person and you know, whatever, maybe you are. I don't know, but so it might be those people that are like, my bill has never been this high, but it could be because they're reading their meter wrong. But I think it might be the opposite way too, that people's readings are going to be more accurate. We, you know, we don't, we don't know, we don't know on all these water meters. Some of them are 40 plus years old and I think that, you know, maybe we would see some people's bills go down and, and we know, we know we would see bills go down because we have so many accounts that we estimate month after month and we're estimating what we're estimating. We can't, you know, we can't cut down the number, you know, we have to estimate what we have to estimate. And I know we had somebody who had a water leak in like, this is just an example, in November and then they did not give us a water meter reading. So they had like 27,000 gallons in November. Then they proceeded to not give us a water meeting, water meter reading, December, January. So December, January, they were getting billed for 27,000 gallons.
Which is your estimate.
Because we had to estimate based off the month before and this, I mean, this would be a huge, I think this would be super helpful for a lot of people and we wouldn't be charging people the $20 no read fee and people calling and disputing that all the time and.
And I think.
Well, I'd say with no read fee, the revenue stream.
It is.
And I mean, I can't add it as a huge revenue stream, but.
It is.
It is.
And I think.
Helping fund this project.
Yeah. So I think Jason, I think even taking that a step further, software will have glitches. There'll be glitches in transition, that sort of thing. But that being said, the software and auto read meters takes out a large opportunity for human error. We also get readings as frequently as we ask for them. So that could be as frequent as hourly or as often as we need to have the crew go out to do manual, like catch the readings. Frankly, I think it will be much harder to dispute their readings and their bill once this is complete. Not to mention the fact that we're requiring humans with human error capacity to give us a reading and for us to accurately input it into our software as well. So I think this is by far a step in the right direction.
Two of the vendors that we also talked to showed us how their software works and it stores data for, you know, one of them was like 30 days, one of them was six months and it stores data for that long. So we can go back, if we do multiple times a week, just drive around and collect data. We have that data stored for multiple months. So we could potentially catch if somebody's having a water leak. You know, they had this many gallons at this point in the month, but all of a sudden they're at 20,000 and we're like, well, something happened between these 10 days. Something happened, you guys, we did you fill a pool? You know, we can determine what happened, but it'll also tell us if a meter goes offline for some reason. So we'll know that, you know, something's not reading, it's not reading right and it'll tell us that it's not reading right, so.
And their radio.
So we're opening this up to be eligible for radio and for a dedicated signal. That's one of the reasons why we're doing a best value proposal system. They will need to show us what system works for the value based on the warranty as well. So right now, two of the vendors that we've talked to most frequently, one uses the radio read, the other uses that dedicated signal and there's a big difference in price.
What kind of signal is it?
So the, the kind of generic radio read signal is like on the open frequency, like it's a regu, like literal public domain. The other one is a proprietary signal that the company bought that's just for that signal. So it's like a laser beam from their product to their software.
Which is great as long as they're business.
Right. And in this case, that company has been around like 60 years or something.
People have been around about that long, it's not longer.
I mean, it seems to me to make more sense to go with something that isn't proprietary because then, you know, if you're unhappy with your service provider, it's a radio frequency red meter, at least you can find another provider who can still.
Yeah.
All of my guys do brand software, that's why.
So what we're looking for tonight is just approval of actually going out to start this process. It looks like by Megan's schedule, the next time this would be in front of you would be May 18th to actually approve a project. And I think at that time, it wouldn't be unreasonable to even bring in these vendors since, you know, there are people that are going to be working hard around town for an extended period of time.
Yeah. Because they would be the install, right? We're not doing that ourselves.
Again, we've structured this to be open either way. I've heard some good horror stories of hiring one company to do it all and I've also heard horror stories of not. So that's just some of the questions that we'd go through in the interview process. But oftentimes, we would hire just say company A and they would likely find local subs to do the physical install anyway, which was, I think what both vendors said that they would likely do.
All right. Are there questions, council? All right, well, then we will adjourn motion to approve the RFP.
Oh, sorry.
The motion has seconded. Any further discussion, council? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I am see, consider paying increase to part-time other store employee and managing.
Yes. As Jason and Myra come up, I'll just kind of introduce this quickly. I apologize for the late ad. We worked really hard over the last few days and weeks to make sure that the numbers we're giving you are accurate and solid and so that we would have the confidence to basically say, hey, this pay increase is not only justified and needed to staff, but we can back it with the performance of the store. So what you have in front of you, again, Myra and Jason will address, but it is an increase to part-time wages as well as to the consultant agreement. Take it away, gang.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Good evening. I am here tonight to propose a, a part-time staff wage increase. Excuse me. Currently, part-time employees, number one, let me back up one second. I'm here to ensure, attract and retain talented public servants. That's what I'm doing here today. I love that one. Thank you. But currently, part-time employees earn $11.19 an hour regardless of longevity, hours of work or additional duties assigned. Our proposed increase is hourly wage of $13.36 per hour. I would also kindly ask you to entertain the additional consideration of having what we would call a shift lead or someone who could. We've consistently been experiencing issues filling day shifts and having a hard time covering day shifts. Pretty much. I'm accumulating overtime as well. And of course, not surprising, most of my staff currently on their second or third job sometimes, so. I would just like to add what we would call a shift lead with extra responsibilities with an added compensation of $14.66 per hour. Thank you very much.
So Myra, can you just clarify a question? So what types of things are you either not able to get to because of the rain, the pressure or have those tasks that are pushing you into overtime? What are you going to gain by having this?
This would be the person who would absolutely cover anything downstairs if I was to be upstairs and as rentals begin to happen, I find myself doing more bookings, tours and contact with, with that in the social events under respect as well. It's very hard for me to be at the store alone, solo, honestly, till two or three in the afternoon anymore. Or we're just so busy. We're so much busier than we ever have been and I'm so happy for that, but I find myself kind of swirling some days. So having someone who could cover myself and even me just taking vacation and having a few days of, of time off. Honestly, to be honest, currently have no one to cover day shifts for me at this point. And so this would be someone that could definitely take on a few extra responsibilities, not just opening and closing as all part-time staff do, but someone who could actually make a decision in what, what I would do in, in particular instances as far as like deliveries and just the daily ordering processes and things, contact with Jason and things like that.
So that, but that may need a daytime position, right?
Correct. Yes. Or actually, it would be nice to have that person on Saturdays as well to be, to be another support on the weekends, but I believe capping at 30 hours for, for what we would ask.
Which is on your pair, right?
Not pair, but benefit level.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, the pair is always a year.
Yes.
Correct.
And I think.
All of our part-time staff, yeah.
Just touching on, but not quite getting to, with the current structure, there's not an assistant manager, so there's not a whole lot of in-house redundancy. If she worked to be gone, take a vacation, be sick, so this person would be, you know, we're calling this shift lead because we're not going to make like another full-time position, but they would have responsibilities similar to Myra's, like we would have the appropriate coverage.
Right. So is your backup for those decisions? You know, I'm assuming.
Correct. Even things like just off the top, like an example, oh, that, that person would know if something came wrong or we could bring that back or, you know, return things or just keep it very smooth on a day-to-day basis if it wasn't there, knowing those type of other kind of operations, what we do, what I do daily.
And you're going to open that up to applicants or, I mean, is it somebody you think?
I actually do have someone in mind.
You don't have to share that. I just, I didn't know you already had somebody in mind or if you were looking for, whether we open that up.
Right. I would love, I would love it to be the person I have in mind, but if we need to, I am actually currently hiring as well, so keeping the, keeping it open is one of them.
Well, I mean, you know, look around town. I mean, you're competing for part-time help from every other business in town and hired part-time employees and, you know, some of those probably have better hours, you know, so it's a little bit more attractive for people. So you're kind of competing with those things you can't change too, so. I mean, it makes sense. When was the last time we did a pay increase for part-time workers?
They get cola each year.
Right. They think of kind of a.
2012.
Okay. Did you already say that?
It's in the report.
Sorry, yes, I could have rehearsed a little bit, right.
And notable, again, I apologize for the late ad, but so we attempted to kind of do like our own mini salary study with this too. We would be at the higher end of part-time retail in Howard Lake, but if you do like the similar for liquor stores, if you use the Metro, Metro metric, we're down by like five bucks or something crazy. If you use the outstate one, we're right in line once we do this adjustment.
Myra and I have been doing a lot of interviews the last couple of months and I think, you know, this increase would help retain some good employees. We've had some good ones around a lot of couple of months, but if they find anything where they make a couple of dollars more, a couple of dollars more, so.
Or if it's closer to the mall or whatever, right?
Right. You know, people from Dassel or from Cato or we just have a half in West Katy Perry. It's a little bit easier to say, I'm going to drive out there for.
Sure.
13 and a half dollars an hour rather than $11.
Right. Right. Is that one of the second piece? This is all a valid one here, right?
Yes. They would need a motion.
Oh, I thought we were going to do those together.
Yeah, one motion for everything.
But are we talking about Jason's?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We could do that. I'm sorry, I thought I kind of went over that. So this would take his monthly engagement from 700 to 1,000.
Okay.
And again, just a reminder, under the current proposal with Jason specifically, we both, both sides have a 30-day opt-out. So if Jason said pound sand Howard Lake or Howard Lake said pound sand, there's a 30-day notification period to that.
I mean, we'd say something more of this as a pound sand.
I probably would.
We'd maybe use a little different phrasing.
I'm not good with words, so.
We would let Megan write it.
Yeah. So again, Jason's been doing great, kind of doing the grand overseeing czar of operations, helping us with buying specifically. We're still kind of fine tuning, making sure that he's spending some time in-house as well. Collectively, these two have just been kicking butt for the store and our numbers show it, so.
And this consulting agreement is with you personally not with the city of Butler, right? Is that?
That's correct. We still have a separate enforced JPA.
Right.
But really, that's more in form at this point when the meat and potatoes of that agreement was about Myra and Jason.
Right.
And now when we brought Myra back with COVID, that's when we readjusted that consultant agreement.
Well, that's more about the buying hour to really, I mean, it's kind of a big feature from that. Okay.
Council, questions?
I, I mean, the, the, well, the, that net or that increase of 16, the, I mean, I think it's set in here, the, the total cost consequence, how does that sit with where we're projecting all? I mean, I know, we know what we did last year, but it sounds like we're still projecting to keep things going due.
So that's beautiful question, Jason. That's exactly why the next item talks about the budget. I'm just going to do a sneak preview with this. We've included the wages. Jason and I have all but beat the hell out of each other on how we come up with assumptions and projections and we're still showing a net profit in 2021 of $99,000 under this month. Mind you, last year was phenomenal and that was about 85, I think, 85 or 87, somewhere in that neighborhood. So this shows like a modest increase from that, which we're learning, we're fine tuning. There's lumps and bumps, but again, that includes that additional wage.
Okay. So I'm assuming when you bottle that out, you factor out Myra's overtime.
Yes.
Because I mean, even a little bit of overtime.
She, to her point, she was getting too much overtime and I thank Myra for being the willing soldier that she is, that at a moment's notice, when someone calls in sick, frankly, it's Myra that has to fill that shift and that leads to overtime, but that has a cost consequence. So again, part of that.
A lot of other non-cost consequences.
Yeah. So a big part of this is like that overall ecosystem. Hopefully we get more part-time help. We're paying them better, they stick around, they do their part, but we're also compensating for that, that in return. But we're also saying, Myra, this is a spreadsheet that we're using to track your hours for part-time. This is a spreadsheet that we're using to track your hours. So there's accountability built into it.
Absolutely. I'm also ready to be, to do evaluations as well, so start part-time evaluations for everyone. We're scheduled already, so.
So this is kind of a little off topic, but when you have turnover, I mean, what would you say is the reason? Do you think people, I mean, obviously it's, it's part-time employment, so there's always going to be some turnover, right? Because people just leave, but you know, I mean, do you think the pay is a factor or do you think it's just kind of a broad spectrum of reasons that can't really?
Sometimes it's the pay, I would say, because a lot of people, they say, well, I got a little bit bored now and I'm over here, you know, taking that raise, taking that even the dollar days or whatever it may be. Sometimes it's your family or other things. Some of the times they're like, I don't need three jobs, yay! I'm really sad to lose you because you're great. And so there's every type of situation.
And this is the easiest one for us to control. I mean, if it's not working conditions or, you know, hours or, you know.
Management.
Management customers.
I could say current staff can be ecstatic when this goes into.
Yeah. Because did you just, there's a couple?
I did, actually, yes. Yep. Three, actually, yes. So I hired two, but still looking for one or three, so.
The more the better, right?
Okay. Other questions, council?
Nice work.
Yeah. Thanks for keeping those up too. I think we will adjourn motion then.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
All set.
We motion and a second. Any further discussion, council? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item D, as I was saying here. Consider approving the liquor enterprise budget.
Do you want me to do?
Yes.
Well, as a, as a. No blood is spilled.
Yeah.
For this.
Interesting, I'll bet.
This is, you know, forecasting is the hardest part of this job and, and last year with COVID, it made it just almost impossible. Enough water's been under the bridge here for the first couple of months of the year. We've got a pretty good idea of how the year is going to look, I think, going forward. And the big thing was, was COVID, you know, was this a bubble that we went through? And I think it probably is not and it's because we're seeing a lot of consistency in terms of week to week sales and, you know, this coming week that we're in right now is the week that everything blew up last year. And we had that massive week of panic buying and, you know, we're not going to have that again. But, you know, as I.
I mean, I did.
It's crazy. I look at these days like, oh, that was a huge day.
So that was great for last year, but for this year, you know, obviously we've got a bigger hill to climb, you know, when we're looking at these numbers. So where, what I did was I took our current growth rate of about 20% year-to-date and I looked out a little bit ahead and, you know, this week, we're never going to hit that number of, this is a 28, $29,000 sales week. We've been, we've been hovering in the 17,000 range since the first of the year. So we're right now 20% ahead. We've got this hill, we're going to, you know, we're cruising out too, we're going to hit, we're not going to make it over this week. But after this week, we go back to about 18,000 as far as last year's numbers and then the campers come. So I figured, let's look at 10% growth for the year. That still shows significant growth, which I think is going to happen here, but it's not over the top, you know? So, well, by the time I did that, I just added 10% onto all the sales categories. We are going to be giving away less money this year in the area of discounts, so.
So on that, sorry, I didn't need to cut you off. I mean, I did, because I did, but have you had any backlash on that? Has there been, I mean, I'm sure right away there was some, but.
A little bit, but not much, honestly. People were excited about our holiday giveaway type of thing where you put your little receipt. I'd like to do that more often, maybe even just twice a year, maybe 4th of July or even once quarterly, just put a big.
A pandemic anniversary.
Absolutely, you know, put something up nice, yes.
We made it.
We should have really done that up this week. Oh, no. But I think that they like that as well, so winning things and, and I think we could , in respects of doing that, keeping loyal customers, so every time they come in, they still drop that receipt in and they're going to want to.
And you took receipts from the other businesses in town.
Correct.
Which I, I mean, that's a really nice touch.
Thank you.
You know, that's.
Thank you.
Kind of pulled it all together. So sorry, I may interrupt you, but.
But yes.
So it's essentially just kind of breaking things down for a 10% growth rate for, for sales, same thing with cost of sales and it works out to about a 28% gross profit, which is a little ambitious, but I like having the, you know, reach for things. And then adding the $160,000 in wages here, which is kind of been the biggest struggle with the whole thing as far as expenses, you know, everything else has ticked up a smidge as expected for year-over-year increases. So we, we're looking at a potential profit of around, was it 100,000 for, for the year, which is in line with my historical returns of, you know, around 10-ish percent over total sales. So optimistically, that's where we're at and I feel pretty solid that this is as good a projection as I can possibly give, given the, what I know right now about how the year's going to pan out and.
Right.
And life going forward. And we also expect some extra revenue to come in from the event center. That's kind of a big question mark there. We're getting to, yeah, we, we, we got extra business from bars last year being closed, but we also lost a lot of business from what, this music festival.
Absolutely. Windstop, the neighbor days, the beer.
Good neighbor days, yeah.
All the other things there too. So I'm not, that's why I'm confident that, you know, we're, we're, there's only enough business to get to one and a half-ish million, you know, in this town. I just think that that's logistically where it's going to, realistically, that's where it's going to be at and we're 80% of the way there.
Yeah.
You know, as it is right now, so.
And when you talk about added revenue from the event center, I mean, we're talking because of beer and liquor sales at those events, not obviously the rental fee because we made that affordable.
And it's separate from the liquor operation budget as well.
Right. I was going to ask about that because we don't have to keep them together.
It is, yep, that goes to general fund, correct?
Myra does have a couple weddings booked for fall, so that's exciting and hopefully they get to stay on, yeah. We just, we just postponed for the second time now, so. So hopefully fall is still good for people.
But notice that to Jason's point, we're being conservative, so there's no revenue anticipated for social.
Yeah. Which, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, at the same time, you probably don't have any expenses anticipated either. That might happen if you get some use, so.
Sorry. No, that's okay. I, I was just curious about, it seemed like everything through COVID in this last 12 months, that the demand on certain products became so great that the prices all rose and we're still seeing that, like right now, steel is crazy. Steel is up 30, 40, 50% since December, but how has, has it affected the cost of the goods at all in the last 12 months? What is, what's the cause? Has it just been flat the whole time or no difference?
Pretty much. I haven't seen a lot of increases.
Even switching over at some of these facilities to make enhanced sanitizer.
Right. Right. Right, right, right.
Well, a lot of those. Yeah, right. Vodka's all about fairy tales, you can make it today and sell it tomorrow and charge whatever you. Pretty easy to make, go for hand sanitizer.
We look for that blood to be skilled.
No, normal, normal beer increases, you know, twice annually usually now, so beer increases at least annually, and now it just did as well, so.
There's more supply issues that we ran into, a lot of canning issues, there's an aluminum shortage as well right now.
Yeah, sure.
And people don't want bottles sometimes, so, yeah, they're, hey, they're, they're choosing other, you know, products.
Margarita mix was in short supply.
Yep.
It's great now, finally getting caught up.
Yep, tonic water, gone forever, that was, high nine was the, yep, COVID killer, but.
Looks like Kool-Aid I'm eating.
And twisted tea, but that's back.
And chicken forever, get that pistachio beer that.
Yay, and now that will be an everyday selection, so that's wonderful, all year round.
Okay. So you're asking that we approve this budget, is that what's happening here?
Yes, please.
Well, council, anything else for Jason and Myra? We will entertain a motion then. We have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you so much, thank you, good evening.
Yeah, good job, guys. Have a good night, guys.
All right, item E, consider approving quotes for installation of carpet at City Hall.
Yes, so included on a twenty twenty-one CIP, we have carpeting here at City Hall. We sought quotes, the low quote was floor value of Howard Lake at sixteen thousand seven fifty-seven. And basically, that would provide carpet tiles for every piece of carpet within eyesight. You can look around, you're starting to see seams, stains. Looking back at the specs, I had to do that for something else, we actually bought tenure carpet and we're at about fifteen now, so it's just one of them things.
Yeah, it's looking pretty worn.
Yep.
And it was exciting to see, we, I think, we ended up like with four or five quotes, and it was nice to see that floor value right out of town here was the low quote.
Yeah, that is nice.
So.
So that's everywhere, right, back, front.
The one area that it doesn't include is the police department, just because there's so much stuff back there to move and get around.
Cat rats.
Yeah, yeah, well, they're just sardined in there. But otherwise, it's the IT, conference room, council chambers, reception, admin, hallways and that sort of thing.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we will entertain a motion. We have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, there's no old business, administrative report, anything else to report to us, Nicholas?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, then we will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.